Welcome to the Commission meeting of July the 13th, 2020. Before we begin, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for Jim Corso, who passed away this week. Jim was a lifelong friend to this city and a friend to the Sandusky School System. He will be sorely missed. Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, we will have an invocation offered by Commissioner Twine, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for your grace and mercy, and we seek your wisdom and guidance this day during this meeting as we handle the city's business. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cresser, we call the roll.
Mr. Poole?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Meiner?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Murray?
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes from our meeting of June 22nd, 2020. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the June 22nd meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
There have been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Once again, we're holding the Sandusky City Commission meeting electronically. Commissioners and staff are in attendance through an Internet hookup in a variety of safe locations. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk, and we will discuss those as the legislation comes before us, and the questions from appropriate staff will be answered. I'd also like to acknowledge the fact that those participating in this meeting, both in our audience and at the table, are doing so with the appropriate social distancing and face mask. We're fortunate to have Erie County Sheriff Paul Ziggworth and Tracy Campbell, interim Senior Director of Firelands Counseling and Recovery Services, to share with us their thoughts on a program tonight called Kahoots. Sheriff, the floor is yours.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I'm here as a result of an email I got from Commissioner Murray, who had heard about a program called Kahoots, which was in another state, and it's a local program wherein law enforcement and mental health team up to provide crisis intervention services to those in the community that may be experiencing mental health issues, ongoing mental health issues. So I called Commissioner Murray and let him know that we've been working at the sheriff's office, we've been working with Firelands Counseling Recovery Services and the Mental Health Recovery Board of Erie and Ottawa County for several years now, planning the possibility of a program here within Erie County that would accomplish some of those goals. However, what we're looking at is a crisis prevention program. There are a number of people in the community that perhaps have mental health issues, they have ongoing mental health issues, and our thought was that we could design and implement a program that would prevent the crisis from occurring in the first place, so you would not necessarily have to intervene in a crisis that never occurred because of participation in the prevention program that we're talking about. So, in a nutshell, what our program would include would be a deputy sheriff and a mental health social worker teamed up to work in the community throughout the county 40 hours a week to check on clients that are referred by generally the courts, maybe individuals that may be on probation, even inactive probation, with the understanding that they just need to take medication and follow the guidelines of their mental health services provider. There are a lot of people in the community that have those stipulations and requirements, and a lot of times, for whatever reason, maybe they don't take their meds, they run out of meds and can't get the meds back, maybe there are other issues that this team, we think, could address very appropriately to try and prevent a crisis from happening. So, you know, there isn't an issue where now it's an emergency-type situation, and that can be prevented. So we are working on that. I apologize, trying to get this face mask straight. And we've been working on this for several years, we've talked about it in the last probably six months.
Right, and then our efforts reported with the COVID situation, but we can meet...
Right. We've had meetings, ongoing meetings, so again, it's Mental Health Recovery Board of Erie and Ottawa Counties, Firelands Counseling Recovery Services, and Bowling Green State University has agreed to kind of mentor the program and to compile statistics to see how effective that it may be long-term, once we get it off the ground.
Excellent.
So, Tracy?
And maybe I should come up?
Sure. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. So currently, we've talked about staffing and things like that, but we have yet to develop a budget, which we're going to meet with the board about, and then we'll determine whether or not they can fund the program in whole or in part, and then we'll see where we're at as we move forward. So that's where we're at with the process.
Commissioners, it's a good opportunity to have questions, and one that's been on my mind since you and I talked a week or two ago, Sheriff, for what kind of funding does this take, and where do you see the funding coming from? Or maybe I can ask that of both of you, really.
What we look to, we look to the Mental Health Recovery Board to hopefully fund the deputy sheriff's position, and then we were hopeful that perhaps Firelands might be interested in funding the mental health social workers' position.
Okay.
If I could add though on that, please. So with our position, we would have to hire a new staff person, so our direct service positions are a blending of funding from the Mental Health Board, and we bill Medicaid where we can and things like that. So we would require additional board funds for that. So that's why I mentioned the budget, because we haven't, you know, gotten anything in writing to them yet and received the confirmation back or not.
And as I shared with you, Sheriff Ziggworth, the purpose of my asking you to make, both to make a presentation tonight is I'm not sure what role Sandusky can play or will play in this, but perhaps we start by playing the role of shining a very bright light on this opportunity and this crisis. As you and I talked, it is so much more economical to divert a crisis than it is to pay for dealing with a crisis, both in monetary terms and in human lives. And I certainly understand, I certainly understand and can appreciate the concept that the patient out there, the person that needs the assistance, we hope will feel much less threatened by a uniform officer showing up with a mental health expert than, and giving them some guidance, whether that means getting them on their meds, getting them off the street, or turning them in the right direction. All these things are preemptive measures, are they not, rather than dealing with the guy with the hatchet in the middle of the street?
Well, they are. They are preemptive, and that's what we want. We, you know, when you have the crisis ongoing now, obviously now you have multiple problems that could be associated with that, including danger to other individuals if the person becomes violent. So with the crisis prevention program, hopefully we could prevent that, we have, you know, less victimization, better treatment, better outcomes for the individual without the intervention any further of the criminal justice system.
Sure. Commissioners, questions or comments for either Ms. Campbell or Sheriff Ziggworth?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
Just a comment. I recognize this is a great idea, and I see a possibility, an opportunity for not just a single deputy that does this, but I think there's benefit to all of you deputies having an opportunity to interact with these people with a social worker, with a social, a mental health person. They'll find techniques and they'll learn things just from being, watching how you deal with those kinds of patients. My experience at the hospital for many years dealing with mental health patients, there's much to be learned and picked up just from being around there. So this is a good program, and I encourage you to see that not, this isn't just contained to just one guy gets an opportunity to benefit from this interaction.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
Lovely idea, and I fully support it. I hope this works out. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners out there in virtual land? I don't hear you. I want to thank you both for the presentation tonight, and we have, I know, out there somewhere, although he can't speak to us, our friends at the Sandusky Register, and they are always very gracious on these kind of issues, to give us a spotlight and perhaps give us a story on your presentation and maybe just spreading the word that this is something that is worth trying. If we can play a role in it, we'll certainly try to find a way to do that also.
Appreciate that. And if anyone would have questions after this evening, they can feel free to contact me at the sheriff's office, contact Tracy at Firelands Counseling. Any of the commissioners would have any questions later on, or for that matter, anybody out in the community, glad to talk to anybody about this and explain what we're trying to do.
Sure. Thanks, and thanks to Commissioner Murray for starting this ball rolling.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
And as I mentioned earlier, you are dismissed. You don't have to sit through all this legislative stuff that we're going to do next. We're not offended, believe me.
Mr. Sheriff.
Mr. Cresser, are there any questions from the public that pertain to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Actually, I had three separate emails. The first one is from Darwood Garrett, and it pertains to item number two. I am requesting that my family home at 313 Tiffin Avenue not be demolished until after September 1st, 2020. There are items in the home that have sentimental value, as well as I have many important papers of value that should not be destroyed. By September 1st, my family and I will be able to empty the home, and I appreciate the consideration. The second one is pertaining to item number four. It is from, I don't know the name of the person, s.borzy is the email address, and it states, "I was wondering if I could have someone read into the record regarding the proposed repairs at Shoreline Park that the western edge of the easternmost walkway near the water, south of the bridge, is collapsing into itself, and also there are deep sinkholes from where the bank has been undermined and is falling in on itself." And then the third one is also through email from Tim Schwanger. It's pertaining also to item number four. It says, "The project as proposed may not be sufficient enough to prevent failure," or I'm sorry, "future erosion. By not extending the sheet pile height, wave action will continue to find a way to undermine the new concrete sidewalk from the land. Additionally, the east side at the north end of Shoreline Park is eroding. Three feet deep sinkholes have opened along the eastern edge. The plan as proposed does not address this issue. According to the supporting documents, the cul-de-sac in major disrepair may not be part of this project due to funding. There appears to be significant dollars in the Parks and Recreation Fund. Please consider expanding the scope of the project, addressing these concerns by combining CDVG funds and Park and Recreation Funds." That was all.
Thank you, Ms. Cresser. Those questions will be addressed as we get to, as we get to the various pieces of legislation. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation, could have a motion to accept to those communications.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have six items on the consent agenda this evening. Are there any of those items that you'd like moved to the regular agenda? Apparently not. Ms. Cresser, you present the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. On the consent agenda, item A is a purchase and sale agreement for a parcel located on Clinton Street through the Land Bank Program. Item B is the purchase and sale agreement for half of one parcel located on Harrison Street through the Land Bank Program. Item C is an amendment to the 2020 budget to correct a Schreiber's error. Item D is approval of the Erie County tax budget for calendar year 2021. Item E is change order number two and final for the runoff reduction through Strategic Tree Planning Project. It is a deduct only. And item F is a new C-2 liquor permit for Morin Foods LLC, doing business as Save-A-Lot, located at 709 West Perkins Avenue.
Commissioners, having heard those ordinances and resolutions, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Twine.
I move to accept the consent agenda items A, B, and C, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether they are in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Cresser, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris? He is muted. Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Those ordinances, resolutions, and liquor permit transfers are approved. We'll turn to our items on the regular agenda. Mr. Cresser, will you read item number one, please?
Yes, item number one is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a consulting contract with Angela Bynton for administration of the Community Development Block Grant Program through the end of calendar year 2020, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioner, have you heard this ordinance? How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance on suspension of the Ruths in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole.
Yeah. I'm having some problems with this concept. The, I think $75 an hour is way more than we should be paying an individual who ran the entire department for less than, much less than that per hour. This just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, so I'd just like some explanation, including, did we bid the job, as in advertise this job if we had a need? We had a full-time employee who did this before that we laid off a month and a half or two months ago, and this doesn't seem right, so just give me some explanation that makes it okay.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, I can answer that question. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Woodson.
Great. So, to answer a few of your specific questions, yes, we did receive quotes for this. We received three total quotes, including Ms. Bynton's. The other two quotes were for 100, I believe, $115 an hour and $165 an hour, and I think it's important to put in perspective a few things. $75 an hour does seem like a lot for a staff person, which it is, it's more than anyone in the city of Sandusky makes on an hourly basis, but for consultants, it's actually specifically a low range for what folks would charge per hour. The other, in addition to it being significantly at least $40 an hour less than any of the other two quotes we received for this work, it's important to note that Angie has, having been the director of the department, some very specific knowledge of what we're doing, and we needed to move quickly to be able to spend down CDVG appropriately. The biggest reason for that being not only are we in our program year, for the beginning of our program year, but in addition, we received an additional over $400,000 in CAREZAC stimulus money beyond what we'd normally receive, and it is very possible, from what we've heard from HUD, that we could be receiving even more funding. So the ability to have someone who, one, has knowledge of our department and our program already, two, came in significantly less and is able to hit the ground running, was why we made the choice that we made. And what I would also say to that is, while it is at $75 an hour, which we do think is affordable for a consultant, it's capped both in its duration and at $15,000 in the total amount that we could expend over that duration, and so therefore, we believe this is truly an interim step that in our transition from Angie working for the city to not working for the city, we've already posted a position that will take these duties, as well as some other duties, on full-time for the community, and so that is why we're asking you to pass this today, and I hope that does a decent job of answering Commissioner Poole's questions.
Additional questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, no question, but I agree with the city manager. This amount, I think, is a little high, but we have a quality person that's going to take this on and complete this out, so I'm good with this.
Additional questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
This was, a job was done by someone that we laid off less than two months ago for probably $25 an hour, and they took on the other duties full-time. The idea that, first of all, and when I get done, you can tell me who these other two people were that supposedly, that, not supposedly, I'm sorry, I apologize, that bid this, who are they, where'd they come from, who did you, and what did you do to bid this job out? And a job that we paid $20 to $25 an hour to do that encompassed much more than this little narrow framework of work, that the person who supervised it quits and then gets twice the salary to do it, is, doesn't make any sense to me. CDVG funds are distributed throughout the country. It's not like this is something that no one has any experience at doing. And the concept of, it's just a, changing from full-time employee to consultant doesn't make the work worth twice the price. And so you folks can do this, and the idea of an employee that was doing the work before leaving the job and two weeks later getting twice the price, twice the cost of what we're paying before is, makes no sense to me. So I'm going to vote no and accept it at that.
Additional questions, Commissioner? Mr. Cresser, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. Mr. Meiner?
Yeah. I was a little alarmed at the $75 per hour when I first looked at it. I did look at the cap at $15,000, and I think it's important to note that the two employees that we lost, combined salaries were probably in the $160,000 a year range, regardless of hourly wage, $160,000 a year. And then you add health benefits, Medicare, job and family services, workers' comp, you start adding that all up, and $15,000 started to sound like a pretty good value to me to get this job done. Thank you.
Additional questions, Commissioner? Mr. Cresser, we call the roll on the resolution, please. On the motion, please.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That resolution is passed.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
I'd just like to point out, in regard to what Mr. Meiner said about the bargain at $160,000 to $15,000, we lost theoretically $160,000 worth of work, and we're now getting probably $25 an hour's worth of work that we're paying $75 an hour for. So the comparison he made, depending on how you look at it, is not really analogous to what we're doing here. We lost all, those people are not doing any work.
Mr. Cresser, you present item number two.
Yes, item number two is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed CDVG fiscal year 2020 demolition project number one, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under the suspension of the Ruths in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington.
I'd like to ask Mr. Lascoe, I know this is up for vote, about the request that we got from Mr. Garrett about giving him until September 1st to get his property and stuff out. I don't know the whole history of that, but by the time we put the request out, it's the middle of July now, is that something that is feasible? Like to ask Mr. Lascoe.
Yes, if everyone can hear me, to Commissioner Waddington through you, Mr. President. Couple of things just to clarify. This current batch of properties that we are seeking permission to go out to bid for does not include Tiffin, 313 Tiffin. We actually, the Commission actually approved a contract with Ed Burdew several meetings ago for that demolition of 313 Tiffin, so that is actually already under contract and is not included in this most recent batch. With that said, obviously, the contractor from, that was approved several weeks ago, will still need to issue a 10-day notification to the state EPA. We also have some ability to control when we issue the notice to commence. So I do think that we can work with Mr. Garrett to remove items from the property in a reasonable amount of time, but I do want to clarify, Tiffin is not in this current batch that we are seeking permission to bid this evening. But if we can get some clarity, and I'm happy to as well, to reach out to Mr. Garrett to let him know, we can work with our code compliance department to get him an access letter within a reasonable amount of time to retrieve whatever belongings the family would like.
Thank you, Mr. Lascoe. Additional questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Twine.
Mr. Lascoe, how long has the property been basically unaccessible to the, to Mr. Garrett, who was requesting access to it in September?
Through, Mr. President, to Commissioner Twine, I don't believe the property has been inaccessible. He just needs permission to access the property, so that if anyone sees him inside, he would have, in essence, a permission slip showing that he's able to access the condemned property, so he's able to access it candidly whenever he would like to, so long as he has that slip to let him know that he's able to be in the condemned property. So I think it's just a matter of him needing to get additional items outside of the property, which I would believe we'd be more than willing to do, and then we can also work with the contractor, Ed Burdew, just to make sure, potentially, he can put that at the end of his list of properties that he could, that he would start with other ones instead. So it's just a matter of getting structured permission to do so, so we understand he's allowed to be in the property.
Okay. I would encourage, yes, we work with the contractor and Mr. Garrett to try to allow him access, so he can get out there if he needs to get out.
Absolutely. Sure.
Additional questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Meiner?
I just wanted to clarify also, clarify also with Mr. Lascoe, that this has been through the housing appeal process, and Mr. Garrett has had the opportunity to go to the courts to stop this demolition, and so it has been quite a time period that has passed since, and I do want to let him get his property, because it is valuable for belongings out of the home.
Thank you. Additional questions, Commissioners? Mr. Cresser, we call the Commission on the motion.
Mr. Meiser? Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Mr. Cresser, item number three, please.
Yes, Mr. President, item number three would require a motion to accept the fiscal officer's certificate prior to considering the legislation.
Commissioners, having heard this request, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I make a motion that we hear this request as subpoenaed.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There'd been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
First time we've ever done this, that I recall, just like an explanation of why we're doing it. Generally, we get a, what certificate is this, explain the certificate, please.
Mr. Reader, I wonder if you can share with us what exactly is going on here, because we're seeing this perhaps for the first time?
Sure, with your permission, President, this is for the urban renewal bonds. We did a temporary urban renewal last year in July, which matures in July of 2020. This renews it, and we are looking to go out 15 years for this. I'm honestly not sure, but they said the fiscal officer's certification needed to be approved first before moving forward with that bond ordinance.
Mr. President, this is Kelly.
Who's they?
Go ahead, Kelly.
So every bond ordinance that the commission passes in my entire tenure here must have the fiscal officer's certificate accepted prior to the ordinance, and it must be on record in order for the legislation to be valid. This is not a new, this is not a new thing, it just hasn't happened for a while.
So we're doing that through a motion, in other words?
Absolutely. The motion is to accept the fiscal officer's certificate before, and then we consider the legislation after.
Understood, Commissioner Poole.
Yeah, I understand the technicalities, I'm, let's take two seconds, okay, it's close enough.
Additional questions, Commissioners? Mr. Cresser, if you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now, Mr. Cresser, do we need to, do we need to vote on, on the ordinance at this point?
So I will read the first ordinance into the record.
Okay.
It is an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of urban renewal revenue bonds pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 725.05(c), in the maximum principal amount of $7,700,000, for the purpose of paying costs of city urban renewal project activities in the Bayfront Urban Revitalization Area, which such urban renewal bonds will also be considered bonds of the city under Section 13, Article 8 of the Ohio Constitution, to pay costs of projects that create or preserve jobs and employment opportunities, and improve the economic welfare of the city and its residents and the state of Ohio, providing for pledge that, for that purpose of certain non-tax revenues, establishing certain funds of the city, approving related documents, and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Would that be Commissioner Harris?
Yes. I move for the adoption of this ordinance and the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
13.
Or 13, I'm sorry.
There has been, do I hear a second on that, please?
Commissioner President, this is Trevor, it's, it is actually 14.
Okay, it is, okay.
Still need a second, I think.
Second.
Commissioner Twine, seconds, that, been a motion and a second discussion, Commissioner. Mr. Cresser, if you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Mr. Cresser, you present item number four, please.
So actually, the second, second ordinance with item three, it is an ordinance authorizing declarations of official intent under U.S. Treasury regulations with respect to reimbursements from proceeds of bonds, notes, or other obligations of temporary advances made for payment prior to issuance and related matters, and declaring an emergency, Section 14.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance authorizing the declarations of official intent under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Cresser, if you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed.
So we need to do a second reading, since it was 14?
It's just 13.
If I may, Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Now that ordinance is passed. Mr. Cresser, you present, now will you present item number four?
Yes, item number four is a resolution declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Shoreline Park Erosion Control Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Wadding.
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. I believe we had, I believe we had a couple of questions regarding, regarding this piece of legislation, and I know that Director Klein is on vacation, and we have a very suitable stand-in, and Josh Snyder, Josh, if you're there, I wonder if you can speak to the two questions, and if you are in the dark as to what those questions are, Clerk Cresser can, can read them again for us.
No, I am here, and to address the first question regarding the sufficiency of the design, the department's response to that is that we have planned, the intent is not to raise the entire park, so there will be wave action that breaches the sheet piling as it exists. However, this project will, if you can envision the, the westernmost finger, it will take the, it will slope concrete from where the top of the sheet piling is up to the paved benches, so there are existing benches in pavers, which are at a higher elevation than than the top of the piling. So that being sloped, as it, as it were, will make it tough for waves to get up to that height, and I don't know that, that we have any evidence of water, even in the high water times we've had this spring, that water has gotten to the level of those bench pavers. So that is, that is the top level where a, a walkway will, will be run connecting these benches. Backing that walkway is also a drainage system, so any concerns of, of waves splashing beyond where they have, where they have even this spring, will be intercepted by a drainage system and then piped back into the bay. So we feel, we feel confident as engineering department that we have a couple of safeguards in to really lessen or minimize the chance for any of that continuance of erosion. Keep in mind, you know, the best data we have from the Army Corps is that the high-water events we're seeing are cyclical, and they happen once every 30 years. So hopefully, what we're seeing now is an anomaly, but even, even in that event, we feel we have designed safeguards into this project.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Sure, yeah, and the second, the second question was regarding the eastern portion of the, this segment of the park. We do, in fact, address the northeast corner of that park, and we actually wrap the walkway in this, this paved area, wraps that northeast corner approximately 50 feet, and returns, you know, southward from that corner. So we do have a similar system, has backup drainage piping to intercept any water that would breach the new, the new paved area, again, in prevention of, of further erosion there. But, but no, Mr. Schwanger is right, we didn't, didn't continue it all the way along the easternmost portion. That is where the least, that is where the least amount of damage has been done, and by, by most observations, the least amount of pedestrian activity. So not that it, not that we don't need to do something to address it, but it's not addressed in this project.
Fair to say, Mr. Snyder, that this is not a comprehensive fix-all for, for that property. When I look at the number and I see it's like $96,000, $97,000, you don't, you don't get a lot for $96,000 or $97,000 on erosion control, I'm certainly aware of that, but as you, as you so eloquently explained, this is not, this is not designed to be a, a fix-all. We, we are pinching pennies, so to speak, here also. Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Certainly. So, Mr. Brady, I'll only, I'll only add, you know, that, and that's why what was alluded to in the email, we have, we have an alternate bid paving the cul-de-sac, which we'd love to do, we know, we know it needs to be paved, but again, like you say, this is not the solution for the entire park either.
Exactly, thank you, Mr. Snyder. Additional questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Yes, to the, Mr. Snyder, we met, we met today, and your comments toward the end dealt with Mr. Borsey's question, correct? With regard, the, you went over and looked at the email, you referred to email, you referring to Mr. Borsey's email?
Through Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole, that was actually in reference to the Mr. Schwanger's second question, but, but to address the, the other email.
Good.
Regarding the, regarding the easternmost walkway, I did visually inspect those, both boardwalks this morning, and I could not find, I could not find evidence of what, what, what the complainant was, was describing there. The bridges are in good shape, the bridge of Butmann's are in good shape, everything that people walk on, pedestrian-wise, looks to be in good shape. Undoubtedly, there's been some wash from, from the high waters this spring, but nothing that would affect pedestrian access in that park.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, essentially, what I want to convey is that Mr. Snyder looked at this, he has taken some pictures of the areas that Mr. Borsey identified, or to the degree that you can understand on the way he wrote the email, and found that it was not, that it was adequate. You did find some things when you looked in the other portions that perhaps need help. Would you, would you illuminate what that was?
Certainly, through, through Commissioner President to Commissioner Poole, in the westernmost approach to the Western Bridge, near the, the middle, middle finger, if you will, of Shoreline Park, there has been some undermining of the sidewalk approach to that bridge, but nothing that can't be repaired with, with some stone, and maybe a little bit of, little bit of concrete, but nothing structurally that's affecting the bridge, nothing imminent that we can't address with, with staff.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Mr. Borsey for his sending us the email, he identified something that we weren't certain what he meant. Definitely thank you to Josh for bringing the effort to go over and walk through, and then the extended effort of when he did not find what Mr. Borsey described, that he checked the rest of the area, and did identify some things that could be done. This is the kind of work that we should be doing for citizens, and appreciate the, the efforts. Mr. Borsey, if this isn't satisfactory, please contact Josh directly. We did the best we could with what you wrote in the email.
Thank you for your thoroughness, Mr. Snyder, also. Additional discussion. Mr. Cresser, if you pull the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Mr. Cresser, you present item number five, please.
Yes, item number five is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Moser Construction Incorporated of Fremont, Ohio, for the wastewater treatment plant ferrous chloride system rehabilitation project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Snyder, hopefully you haven't drifted away from your desk. I recognize this piece of legislation, and I know this is the second time around for this, I'm going to presume that the numbers have, have gotten better, because it looks like we're at a position where we can move forward. Can you explain to us how this happened?
Yes, you're, you're correct, President Brady. The, this was a rebid from what we had bid out this fall. We'd only attracted one interested bidder who was greater than our 10% allowance for award, and so we went back to the drawing board somewhat in that we, we refined the scope of the project, we sharpened up what we were looking for in the bid form, what we were asking of the bidders, and we also extended the completion date. And so a combination of those three items brought the bidding from, I believe, believe in our first bid, we were in the $850,000 range for this same project, brought it back to where we're, you know, where we're at today in the $660,000 range.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Additional questions or discussion, Commissioners? Mr. Cresser, if you pull the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Cressy, present item number six, please.
Yes, item number six is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds to Erie Materials Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio for asphalt and paving material to be supplied for in-house street repairs and projects in calendar year 2020 and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Commissioners, typically this legislation in the past, I believe, has ended up on the consent agenda. I ask that it be placed on the regular agenda specifically because it's a significant amount of money, almost $126,000. And although we are certainly going to be and have been pinching pennies through the monetary situation we find ourselves in, we need to let our residents know that we are still going to be spending $126,000 on blacktop in the coming year. That is not an insignificant amount of money. I think we all wish it was about 20 times that amount. But you eat an elephant one bite at a time and we're going to continue to appropriate these dollars towards buying the blacktop and our employees putting it down, hopefully. Additional discussion on this piece of legislation, commissioners? Ms. Cressy, you poll the commission on the motion.
Mr. Meiner? Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Cressy, present item number seven, please.
Yes, item number seven is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Kronos Sashar Incorporated of Branchburg, New Jersey for the Kronos workforce-ready cloud-based application for employee management for use by the Human Resources Department and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Cressy, you poll the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Meiner?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda items. We will turn to our city manager for his report. Our city manager is in his office upstairs. And he needs to turn on his microphone.
Good evening. I apologize for that to the Commission President, commissioners, audience and staff. I'll start with what is a very long list of donations tonight and then I'll move to new and old business. First, a donation of 50 chicken sandwich coupons was received from Chick-fil-A for the Sandusky Police Department. I have several donations to police and fire. What I will do is read each of them and then ask for a motion to approve all of them just for the sake of time. Also, a donation of 60 gift certificates for each police officer for a 12-inch one-topping pizza was received from Faith Church who has partnered with Chet and Matt's Pizza. This is a thank you to SPD for all they have done, especially during these difficult times. Also, Valley Ford Huron donated a remote control police cruiser valued at 300 to SPD, which will be used for PR at events. A donation of 47 gift certificates for each firefighter for a 12-inch one-topping pizza from Faith Church in partnership with Chet and Matt's. These gift certificates are a thank you to the fire department for all they have done during these difficult times. A donation of $300 was received by an anonymous donor for the fire department to use as they see fit. And a donation of $750 was received from Towboat Maine LLC as a thank you to the Sandusky Fire dive team for their outstanding assistance in the recent rescue events on the water. I'd ask for a motion to accept all of those donations on behalf of the Sandusky Police and Fire Departments.
So moved. Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved. Our thanks to all of those wonderful people.
Moving on to the Friends of the Greenhouse. They've obtained funding of $15,120 to proceed with the lighting upgrade for the Boy with the Boot Fountain in Washington Park. Grant funds have been received from the Dorn Foundation, Impact Fund through Erie County Community Foundation, in the amount of $5,170 and the remaining amount of $9,950 was recently approved by the Mylander Foundation. The Friends have contracted Allphase Power and Lighting to perform the installation of the Rexel DMX color-changing fixtures for this project that will preserve and enhance community pride of a valued icon while enhancing visitors' impression of Sandusky. It is anticipated that the work will be completed sometime this summer. I'd ask for a motion to accept those generous donations.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. For those few of you out there that are not familiar with the Friends of the Greenhouse, I can tell you that this city runs on the backs of a lot of volunteers. Those people are volunteers and they have a history now of applying for and receiving grants that make dramatic improvements in the city. We thank them for this donation and for those that have come in the past and hopefully those will come in the future. I had an interesting request from them in the last couple of weeks and that was, they have asked that if they could informally have a commissioner to be an informal liaison to their group so that they had a better way to communicate to the city. And they specifically asked that that commissioner be Commissioner Waddington. He has graciously accepted that role. That will add one more meeting night a month to Mr. Waddington's social calendar. So thank you for doing that.
That's great.
Without objection, I think we've had a motion and a second. Without objection, that motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved with our thanks to the Friends of the Greenhouse.
Thank you, Commission President and commissioners. And speaking of the wonderful work done by the Friends of the Greenhouse, we want to also accept some in-kind donations from individuals who've assisted with Washington Park and other properties this summer. And those in-kind donations include 45 bags of mulch and 11 pavers valued at $126 from Bill and Barb Beal, 11 bags of mulch valued at $40 from Mary Jane Haller, bags of mulch valued at $288 from the Friends of the Greenhouse, and a concrete bench for the Sunken Garden in Washington Park valued at $50 from Judy Tony. I'd ask for a motion to accept those donations.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion.
Just a big thank you.
See what I mean? Without objection, that motion will be approved in hearing no objection. That motion is approved once again with the thanks to those individuals of Friends of the Greenhouse.
Thank you. And moving on to departmental reports, starting with police. Lieutenant Dana Newell worked his last day with the department on July 9. Lieutenant Newell's worked for the department for 25 years. He's a proud hometown Sandusky Blue Streak. He had a great career with a vast number of duties throughout his career as an officer, detective, narcotics detective, SRO, Detective Bureau Commander and Shift Lieutenant. Lieutenant Newell will be greatly missed because he's always had a connection and pulse of the community and strive to make lives better each day for the citizens. He worked extremely close with the newer officers over the last several years and has been a mentor to many. A special thanks to Dana for his leadership, dedication and commitment to the department and community. That was a note from Chief Orzak. I'd also just like to say how much it's meant to me over the last six years to get to know Lieutenant Newell and I've often called upon him to ask me to help understand what's going on out in the community and he's always been very willing to talk and to share his insights with me. He's going to be greatly missed. Fortunately, he will remain in town and remain active in the community and we wish him well, whatever his next endeavor is. In addition to the thank you for Lieutenant Newell, we want to let the commission know that Officer Lucas Rosper, who just completed his fifth year with the department, has resigned effective July 9. He's moving out of state for another opportunity. His wife, I believe, secured a position down in the South Atlantic portion of the country and we just want to thank him for his five years of service and wish him well on his new adventure. Moving on to the finance committee. The next finance committee meeting will be Friday, July 17 at 8:00 a.m. We hope to be able to provide a report out to the city commission at our next meeting after speaking with the finance committee. Also, the municipal income tax filing deadline is July 15 and folks who need assistance can contact the Regional Income Tax Agency or RITA at 1-800-860-7482 or visit their website at www.ritaohio.com. Tax payments can also be made at the customer accounting office at City Hall located at 240 Columbus Avenue. Moving on to public works. Orrin McMonigals last day as the superintendent of Big Island was July 9. Orrin has managed the operation of Water Services since 2015 and strengthened relationships with surrounding communities and stakeholders. His intelligence and meticulous eye for details ensured great tasting drinking water for all as it was compliant with the P. relations and potential upgrades to various infrastructure and technology. We wish him well in his new position in Painesville. And on a related note, we want to congratulate Bill Birch Jr. for his promotion to Assistant Superintendent of Water Services in training to replace Orrin in the near future. Also, Shoreline Drive opened to two-way traffic on July 2. Morrisville experienced two significant changes. The width has been reduced and the intersection at Hancock and Shoreline Drive is now a three-way stop. Both items were designed this way as part of a traffic calming measure to help with slowing down vehicular traffic to create a safer traveling environment for pedestrians and cyclists. I've traveled on that both as a pedestrian in my car several times and it does seem like people are adjusting very well to that. Also, to minimize traffic delays, ODOT worked hard to complete resurfacing and striping between the East Corporation limit and Butler Street prior to the opening of Cedar Point. They'll continue to resurface through Jackson Street over the coming weeks. Forestry has successfully completed storm cleanup throughout the city. Residents with questions or concerns about damaged trees are encouraged to call 419-627-5829. Now that this is complete, we're reminding residents to not leave tree branches in the right-of-way. You may take them to Barnes Nursery on Camp Road at Huron. Also, in 2020, Ohio Edison will be using Penline Tree Service to perform forestry operations along the Cedar Point Chaussee. The program includes inspecting vegetation near the overhead power lines to ensure the trees are pruned in a manner that helps preserve the health of the tree while also maintaining safety near electric facilities. Trees that present a danger or are diseased may be removed. The work is conducted by certified forestry experts under the company's direction. Property owners are encouraged to contact Ohio Edison at 1-800-633-7, sorry, excuse me, 1-800-633-4766 prior to making arrangements for any private tree service. Also, the city was notified by Norfolk Southern that they will be closing various tracks for the tie-in surfacing team to complete work the week of July 20. The following tracks will be closed for approximately two to three days. That includes Old Street, Mill Street, Campbell Street, Pipe Street and Remington Avenue. And finally, the planning department, just an update on scheduled meetings. Planning Commission is scheduled for July 22 at 4:30. Board of Zoning Appeals for July 16 at 4:30. The Landmark Commission July 14 at 4:30 and the Arts and Culture Commission for July 21 at 5:15 p.m. Unless otherwise notified, those meetings will take place remotely. With that, I conclude my remarks for this evening and I'm happy to take any questions or comments from the city.
Commissioners, prior to opening up the discussion or answering your questions from Commissioner or from Mr. Webster, I have a question for him. And I would ask that he provide this commission with an explanation detailing a letter correspondence received from our Ohio House of Representatives, DJ Swearingen, just in the last few days that was rather upsetting to most of us and came as somewhat of a shock to probably all of us. Mr. Webster, I wonder if you can shed some light on that?
Yes, certainly. I was a little surprised by State Representative Swearingen's letter to the commission because I haven't spoken about that topic with him directly. We do advocacy work each year. We build into the contractual services, line item funds, and we've worked since 2017 when we were selected to host the State of the State address in Sandusky with a group named Capital Partners out of Cleveland. And each year, they've helped us with different projects at the state and the federal level. The most successful ones of those, an $800,000 state capital grant that was received from the Bowling Green State University Resort and Attraction Management School with Cedar Fair. We've also received some funding for the Jackson Street Pier and I believe various projects related to the Sandusky Bay Pathway. So that's been a successful relationship and that's always been built into our contractual services. This year, in the 2020 budget, we had also built the funds into work with Capital Partners once again. And obviously, once the coronavirus hit, we were looking at the pathway as our priority project this year and probably for the foreseeable future as we look to complete that throughout the city. But when our budget challenges became glaring and due to the coronavirus epidemic, we looked to redirect them and entered into a contract to have them provide some specific services, to just look for any revenue enhancements that we could get at either the state or the federal level. And they were working through that and pitched various ideas to us throughout the process. And one of those issues was what you received the letter about with Commissioner Swearingen looking at how we could enhance revenue on a local basis, which turned out to not be feasible, which we're okay with. And I would just say that that's not uncommon. We've all benefited from that work in the past and we'll continue to look at various options as the commission has asked to attract new funding to the city and ultimately get us through these difficult times that we face. But I'm happy to answer any other questions regarding that issue.
Mr. Webster, looking at the letter from our Ohio representatives, it would give the appearance that that concept was way downstream. In fact, it was nowhere near the starting gate. Is that not correct?
Yeah, I actually hadn't discussed this directly with either Senator Gavron or Director Swearingen. Capital Partners had broached this topic among several others and had said to each of them at that time, you know, here's one option that's built on something that Erie County did actually in the last session, which was to pass the sales tax for a three-year period with the sunset, to look at whether that could be an option for Sandusky. And obviously, it looks as if Representative Swearingen felt that that's not something that he could support at this time, which we're okay with. And we hope to be able to continue conversations with him and others as it looks to find other revenue as resources become available or stimulus dollars become available in the future.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for the city manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole.
I need to put some context in this for the citizens so they understand what we're talking about. So I'm going to take a moment and read into the record the letter so that everyone understands what we're talking about. It's from the Ohio House of Representatives, from Ohio State Representative DJ Swearingen. It's our representative. It says, Dear Sandusky City Commission, recently, the city's lobbyist, Capital Partners, on behalf of the city of Sandusky, requested that I introduce legislation authorizing the city commission to levy a 0.5% income tax increase over a three-year period. While I have nothing but good things to say about the professional advocacy Capital Partners provides on behalf of the city, I cannot satisfy this request for two primary reasons. First, from a practical perspective, the legislature is meeting only sporadically over the summer and this likely would not garner serious consideration until late in the fall. That timeline likely presents a problem. Second, I firmly believe that if there is to be an income tax increase in the city, the voters should decide that issue on the November ballot. I realize the strain on our community in light of recent events. There have been several steps that I've taken to begin alleviating that strain. I have delivered a letter to Governor Dewine, signed by hundreds of area businesses and authored by the Lake Erie Shores and Islands, requesting increased investment in our region from Jobs Ohio because of COVID. I have also had similar conversations myself. I have also had similar conversations myself with Jobs Ohio directly with regard to how we can create good-paying jobs with benefits for constituents. While there was uncertainty certainty early on surrounding Cedar Point, our area water parks and the many impacted businesses and workers, I introduced an amendment to safely open water parks and amusement parks. I have also introduced a bill which recently passed the House allowing bars and restaurants to satisfy, to safely expand their outdoor and delivery services as there are many in our area. Finally, I introduced an amendment to issue state bonds so that infrastructure and school facility projects can continue to be funded by the state. The legislature, through other pieces of legislation, has also taken other steps to lessen the burden due to COVID. I look forward to our continued efforts together toward making Sandusky a great place to live. All the best. D.J. Swearingen, Ohio State Representative, District 89." So now everyone understands what we're talking about, and I'll yield the floor to other commissioners to speak.
Questions, Commissioner, for the City Manager?
Mr. Chairman, no question, but I talked to a few of the commissioners today, and I guess Friday night it was like a surprise. I'm thinking, when I read that letter from Mr. Swearingen, that the commission, and I thought, wait, a timeout. I knew nothing about it at that time, that it was even being looked at, and that a half percent increase that I would never, ever, at this table, take that citizens' rights away and try to vote or pass something like that at any rate as a commission body. I just didn't think that was fair or right. It kind of struck me like, you know, is there more to it? I think Mr. Whoopser cleaned that up a little bit now, and I have a little better understanding. But I would like to hear from the other commissioners, too. It's kind of like it took... It was like a sting over the weekend for myself to accept that. It was tough. You didn't really know. It's like, do we have moving parts here that, you know, that we're not all aware of? And so I'm just going to leave it go at that. So I'll let the other commissioners chime in.
Additional questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Twine.
I too was a surprise. I corresponded from Representative Swearingen. I felt like we were kind of blindsided and kept out of the loop, which I really didn't appreciate. And I do not, I agree, I do not agree with Commissioner Lottington. I don't support taking away our citizens' rights to determine whether there is some type of income tax increase. So I, again, I'm not very pleased that there was some misunderstandings about what Capital was doing or was asked to do, but I was not aware, and I hope that this doesn't happen
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Meiser.
I was a little alarmed by the letter. However, I do understand that we have a contract with this lobbyist, and it's a $10,000 contract that, a line item, that they lobby for everything and all the money that they brought into the city. I get that. So I do, I do think that if they were successful, which I doubt they would have been, but it would have came back to the floor, and we would have all voted on that going through, and I don't think it would have went through. I don't think that seven commissioners or four commissioners would have voted to pass an income tax levy onto the general public without them having any input. So I appreciate the job they do, all the money they brought into our town, but it's just something that they don't have the real connection with the people that live here right now. Thank you.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
The Commissioner Harris.
Yes, I would just like to, you know, just echo much of what, you know, my other fellow commissioners said and, you know, that I simply agree with much, if not all, of what they said. So that's all.
So if I could, through the Commission President to the Commission, respond to some of the comments from the Commissioners and maybe provide a little bit of additional context. While I did have discussions with several Commissioners about our efforts to try to find new revenue for the city and different options that we had, for every 10 conversations that I have regarding different opportunities for the city, only one of those probably makes it to conversations with city commissioners because most of them prove infeasible. But also, those types of conversations before we get things back to the commission have led to a lot of the success and the ribbon cuttings and all the things that all the Commissioners have participated in and benefited from over the last several years. And so I would just say that I think Representative Swearingen brought this to the commission very prematurely, and I look forward to discussing that with him. But I can assure you, there is nothing that the staff could have done as we look to provide revenues to face or to fill what is a very real $7 million budget gap that we're facing this year. We're leaving no rock unturned, but there's nothing that we could do without coming back with dialogue for this commission. I like to think that I built up a strong enough relationship with this commission over the past six years that you would trust me to bring things to you at an appropriate time, because those relationships are going to be critical to continue working together in a positive place.
Commissioner Poole.
Mr. Chairman. No, this is Twine.
What was that? Question Twine?
Yes. Yes, I appreciate Eric's response and his, the work that he's done. I still support what he's doing, but what I didn't appreciate is that, again, there was some type of miscommunication here that our representative felt like all of us commissioners requesting this type of, this ask when we did not. And so that's what I don't want to happen again, a miscommunication or misunderstanding about what this commission as a body is requesting. Now, again, I have confidence in Eric's ability to do the things that he's done and the relationships that he's established, but this is, this is an important piece of what we do. And yes, we have budget issues, but again, before one of our legislators at the state level assumes that all of us is making the ask this manner, I want that communication to be very clear, whether it's one commissioner making the ask or two commissioners, it's something that all of us need to be aware of. That's what I don't want to happen again.
Commissioner Poole.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I echo what Ms. Twine just indicated. I'd like to point out that I think we have a, maybe a misunderstanding of the, and it's our fault as a commission that we haven't clearly perhaps identified to the City Manager boundaries on what he can do. This was a request of a state representative on our behalf, the commission's behalf, to start state legislation to do just what it said, and we did not ask them to do that. And the manager, for whatever reason, being under the impression that it was okay to commission that and pay $10,000 in order to make that happen is what is wrong, what's the problem is here. The misunderstanding may be us not communicating our, what we expect to be done. Raising taxes is not an operational action. City managers make sure the trains run on time. Where the train goes, how we finance it, is done from this table. So the decision to ask either the taxpayers or anyone to raise the taxes on the citizens of Sandusky, that starts at this table. It doesn't start at staff and certainly spending $10,000. And yes, we're going to get through this, and I am perfectly comfortable that it was simply a mistake that we are at least 50% responsible for in not being clear on what is and is not acceptable. But don't, this, hopefully, perhaps more discussion needs to be done to make sure clear what the, I want to be sure that the manager recognizes that raising taxes needed to start here, and Representative Swearingen did the only thing he could do, answer our request. So the premature and all that, that's, it wasn't premature. He was asked to do something that he could not do by us, City Commission, and he replied to us. So let's take that off the table. As far as I'm concerned, the Representative Swearingen did anything except what a good representative would do. That's all I, that's all I have. And yes, this can't happen again. Things that are per view, you don't get to do on your own.
Commissioner Meiser.
Things have gotten really twisted, I think, in the last couple of conversations. I agree with Naomi completely. However, Mr. Poole just blamed everything on Mr. Whoopser. I, after, when I first heard the $10,000, yes, I was alarmed. If you look into it, the $10,000 was, is a contractual obligation with the lobbyist group that brings money into the community. And to back up what Mr. Whoopser has said, I have, that, this man's brain is firing 100 miles a minute. Every time I sit down and talk to him, he'll bring up brainstorming so many ideas. He does, he fires them off. If we're talking about something and he segues off into another way to make the city better. I think that I agree with him, I agree with Naomi, but I don't agree with you guys that this was solely Mr. Whoopser's idea to push this forward. I, when you and I first communicated, I didn't have all the facts. I'm starting to listen to both arguments. I tend to believe that this is a lobbyist group that's trying to earn their $10,000 and push a bunch of things through. So, and I don't think it would have passed. If they were successful in this, I thought, Serrigan, who I think is a R, who is up for reelection probably this election year, to send a letter to all of us to get a little attention, I'm not buying it all. I like to have a, look at the whole picture. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to point out perhaps the obvious. I think we all realize this, but it's worth saying, and that is that policy is always, as Mr. Poole put it, policy is always going to start and finish at this table. Mr. Whoopser understands that very clearly. Now, we have been wildly successful. Well, we've been successful in the last few years, part and parcel because we've been aggressive and because we've looked at, we've thrown a lot of stuff against the wall, not all of it has stuck. This one obviously didn't stick, and this one, perhaps someone got ahead of themselves, whether it's us or the lobbyist or our representative. I'm not sure who, and it doesn't matter who it is. But I am not going to sit here and take away from Mr. Whoopser the ability to be aggressive. I'm not going to take away from the city the things that have made us successful to this point, and that is, we need to be aggressive. We need to communicate, too. And I am willing to say, perhaps this is a failure to communicate. Perhaps it is a failure to communicate on my part, or perhaps on Mr. Whoopser's part, or perhaps on, on the Capital Partners' part, communicate back to us before they ask for, to move forward with a request of legislation. But the reality is, we've been successful because we have been aggressive, and I want us to continue to be aggressive. And if this is a failure to communicate, believe me, we can get better at that. Mr. Whoopser can get better at it, I can get better at it, and all of us can get better at it also. Additional comment?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
Let's put this to bed and move on, okay?
Momentarily, I need to, if you have something to say...
Commissioner Poole.
Yeah, Mr. Meiser, I just need to point out that, we're not about blame, it's about identifying what occurred and making sure that it doesn't happen again. Your suggestion that somehow or another that Capital Partners did something inappropriate, so I can simply ask Mr. Whoopser, was Capital Partners in breach of the contract? The contract specifically says that they will take no action without your, without approval. And since none of the commissioners were involved in this, apparently, that leaves you. Now, Mr. Meiser, you're right, if there was some other third party from the city of Sandusky that gave Capital Partners the approval to go and ask for the legislation to be put forth. Now, if they did it without that, then they are in breach of contract because it specifically says in here that they can't do that, and we should address that. Maybe we get a refund of our $10,000. So I don't know which it is, but as you did, I just, just, let's get it clear. We can put it to bed when everything is clear what went on. I don't want to leave here with shades of truth of what occurred. What's on the table is a contract was made, signed by the manager, for $10,000 for something on our behalf that we didn't know anything about. And then action was taken that is outside of what we want. Why would we spend $10,000 for something we were going to vote down? And that's the basis of your, of your, of your observations, Mr. Meiser, and I just want you to give thought to that, and that's why I can't follow it.
So through the, through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole.
Mr. Brady, Mr. Brady, he did...
Commissioner Meiser.
Yeah. Okay. That's fine. I am 100% in support of Mr. Whoopser. He works hard every day trying to think of ways to get this city back on track. This city went down over 40 years. I haven't seen a young man step in here and try to think of all kinds of ways to make us get better again. Maybe, maybe he did some bad decisions at one point in time. We all have. I don't think this is it. I think this lobbyist group that we paid $10,000 for, this is just a small portion of what they're doing for us. This, it's not $10,000 to approach a state legislator to say, pass income tax on Sandusky. This is a lobbyist group that's trying to freaking get us money in this city and to make it better. It isn't $10,000 for one little item. They're throwing things out there, see what sticks. And I agree with all of you, it wouldn't have stuck. They live in a different world than we do. I agree, but don't put this on Mr. Whoopser's back.
If Mr. Whoopser, he can clear this up. You either approved it, you either approved what they did or they, or someone approved it, or they didn't. They're either in breach of contract, or they did what we asked them to do, and that should answer Mr. Meiser's question.
Through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, the contract with Capital Partners stated very generally that they would help us to try to bridge our budget deficit by doing advocacy for us at the state and the federal level to attract new revenue to the city. This is one of several ideas that they threw out. It's the only one that our state representative decided to comment on back directly to the commissioners. Without responding to them directly or myself directly, it's been pointed out that this is a tough campaign year, and I think you guys have walked into a conversation again that is exactly the conversation that they wanted to have, and that's okay. But just know that, again, for every 10 ideas we throw at the wall, and I've been instructed to look aggressively for funding, you know, if this were feasible, if we heard an answer from the state that they wanted us to look into this more deeply, it's exactly what we would have done. It is very likely that a call between myself and D.J. or anyone else at the state, or between D.J. and the Capital Partners could have resolved this and with his concerns or our concerns. But again, this was one of many, many options that were thrown out there because we are disproportionately impacted more than other communities in Ohio based on the reliance on income taxes generated or admissions taxes generated by Cedar Point, which are going to be significantly down this year. So if the commission wishes to continue to have this conversation, you can do so. But I stand by our actions. I think they've been successful in the past, and again, I think we've walked into a political campaign, and that's too bad.
Mr. Chairman, one last question, and I'll be done. I promise this is it.
Commissioner Poole.
I need to understand, do you recognize that raising taxes on the citizens of Sandusky is our call and not yours and lobbyists? That's, and that, that covers it all. That's what I want to leave here with. I don't want that to occur again. All of your past wonderful things, I've always accepted those. Do you understand that this, what we're talking about today, asking a state representative to raise taxes, to put in a bill that has taxes raised by the city commission, that we should have been the ones to okay that? Do you recognize that?
Commissioner, through the Commission President to Commissioner Poole, absolutely, I recognize that.
Thank you.
I had no authority to enter into any agreement with the state or anyone else without the vote of the city commission. I did discuss several options for raising revenues with the majority of our I did discuss several options for raising revenues with the majority of our commissioners, uh, many options, and, and certainly, this would have come back to the Commission for discussion and debate before anything would have gone forward.
Next item on our agenda are items of old business.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I, last week, I emailed our Finance Director, Mrs. Reader, because I knew today, I think, was the deadline. We had looked with the COVID and everything going on as far as delinquent water and sewer bills, and I know we've got a little over 2,600 currently, and she said that, she assured me today when I stopped in her office, that they are going to work on a plan for the shutouts. I'm just, we, we initiated that back in March. We tossed around the $100, $150, and kind of left it at that. Well, now today's the day you pick the fruit. Today's July 13th, okay? So she said, she told me this afternoon, that they will work on a plan and hopefully bring it back to the Commission. I don't know if it'll be next meeting, but maybe the following one, that there'd be no shutouts currently. We got to, you know, come up with a plan. I don't want to run into another Joe Yo's, 260,000 like we did at Mobile Home Park. So this is definitely, out of 10,000 water use, that's a lot. That's over 25%.
Ms. Reader, I wonder if you can, if you can speak to that issue, and you can provide us with maybe a timeframe for when we can expect to see a, a, a plan to move forward with that?
Yes. How are you, Commissioner President? We are working on a plan, trying to figure out what threshold we want to be at. Obviously, the commissioners are going to have a say. Mr. Whoopsir wants to make sure the commissioners have a say in our shutoff procedures going forward. So in the next day or so, I'll have an email out to everyone so we can begin these discussions again and see what the best course of action is. Mr. Waddington is correct, we have not sent out any shutoff notices. No one at this point is on notice to be shut off. The order was lifted today for the EPA that we could resume shut offs. So we'll be working on this so that we can get back to our normal procedures of having shut offs and getting some of these delinquent bills taken care of.
Thank you. That good, Mr. Waddington?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to allow Mrs. Reader's staff to extend the shut offs so we're not shutting anybody off tomorrow or this week until we have this resolved in some fashion. I'm hoping that, to support her in that.
That seemed plausible, Ms. Reader.
Absolutely. We have to send out letters that give the residents 10 days to pay before they're due to be shut off. We do not have letters scheduled this week.
That's great. Thank you. Additional items?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Meiser.
Oh, no, this is a.
Oh, Mr. Harris. Mr. Harris.
Yes, yeah, just, just a couple of things I'd like to bring to folks' attention. You know, with my, with my presence on social media, you know, especially during my very brief time here on the City Commission, you know, I, I, I notice, you know, many, much of our community, and I, and I don't even want to say majority, so maybe I shouldn't even use much, but there are some nonetheless, that, you know, you see a habit of, of individuals, you know, sharing false narratives and, and really basing, you know, their opinions off of, off of either A, false information, or, or folks perhaps not doing their due diligence and just taking other people's words for it. You know, the problem, where the problem lies in all of that is, you know, our, our City Commission oftentimes becomes questioned as to, as to what it is that we're doing and, and really our overall intentions. And some people, again, just believe that our intentions, for, for whatever reason, perhaps aren't pure. So, that being said, I just really want to encourage everyone to play their part in, in making this, you know, a better place for all of us to, to live and work. And they can do so by, you know, reaching out to any of us, any of us commissioners or our city manager, and also just making sure that they, as individuals, you know, seek information whenever it is that they have questions, rather than just continuing to create this revolving door of, of false narratives. So, you know, many of them can do that by, you know, obtaining email addresses, phone numbers, you name it, and/or even, you know, tuning into our, you know, our YouTube channel here. So, so yeah, I just, like I said, I just kind of wanted to address that and sort of clear the air, and just really just encourage people to simply get more involved because, I tell you what, although we are, us commissioners are in charge of, of much of what goes on, it's also very important for everybody to play their respective roles and, and help us so we can do a better job. And lastly, I'd just like to end things on a, on a very positive note. When I was actually down on the Jackson Street Pier, meeting with, meeting with a concerned citizen about another matter, there was a little girl by the name of Zarina Whoopsir, and she approached me and, and very kindly, and she said, excuse me, she said, I was wondering if you're the person that's in charge of, of fixing our, our state theater? And so I told her, I told her no, but that there were certainly many individuals that were going to play a hand in rebuilding it, and she said that she was looking forward to continuing to track the progress. So I just thought, you know, I'd let everyone know that there's a soon-to-be five-year-old, I believe, that is very concerned, and is keeping her eye on things being rebuilt, you know, as far as it's, as far as the state theater's concerned, so.
Good news.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I got one last thing. At our last meeting, we discussed the 500,000. We were going to have something prepared for this meeting. It's been two weeks. Is anyone, do we have any more discussion on that? As far as the safety money was going to go to Fire Department, Police? We kind of left it up at this, this next meeting, and I haven't seen anything or heard of.
Mr. Whoopsir, do we have, it seems to me that I read some communication regarding that, and I believe the communication was that it was, those dollars in some fashion were going to be spent on the safety services, but I, I'll leave that to Mr. Whoopsir to respond to. Microphone is off.
Could you repeat that? I had a hard time hearing the question. Could you repeat it one more time?
Mr. W, Commissioner Waddington's asking if there's been any decision on the additional $500,000 we, we're receiving and how that's going to be appropriated in response.
Through, through the Commission President to the Commission, we have a $7 million deficit. Every dollar that we receive in stimulus funding is going towards plugging the gap in that deficit. So those funds, as far as we know, are eligible to pay police and fire salaries, but they're paying the police and fire salaries that we have on our books. We're not adding, we're in no position to add any new spending unless the City Commission directs me so. I would never, or I do, I believe the Finance Director would ever recommend that as being fiscally prudent in a year where we have a $5 million reserve and we're facing a $7 million deficit, and likely a $4 million deficit going into next year. But I'm happy to talk further if you guys would like to direct me.
Mr. Chairman.
Somewhere else.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
Mr. Whoopsir, I was just for clarification. We left the last meeting two weeks ago that we'd have something at this meeting as far as updates. I'm fine with however they do it. I just wanted clarification, so it is going towards the safety force. I'm good with that. Thank you.
It is. Any additional items of old business? Turning then to items of new business.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
Um, this will be my last thing tonight. This, I know the last few meetings I brought up about volunteers that we have throughout the community. Tonight was a perfect example, like the greenhouse and stuff that we have going on. And I've talked to you about this a little bit. And I would like to start and have it once a year, a plaque at City Hall. Mr. Brady, you assured me you'd go half with on this. And each year, have one, maybe two, or as many as three, people that are recognized by the City Commission, and have that plaque here at, somewhere here at City Hall. And for the first two, I thought with the, just recent passing of Jim Corso, and then Mama Collins, who we lost recently, also be the first two volunteers. And then each year, have the Commission Pool get together, maybe also with the City Manager Whoopsir, and if we missed anybody. We've got a lot of people out there in our parks and, you know, the cleanups, just in general, that saves us a fortune and do a lot of good things to help this community. And I just think them two, and I know they're both blue streaks, so, but as the first two, I would like to ask the Commission if they would support Mama Collins and Jim Corso's first two to be inducted in this, and then have each July or each summer, if it's one, two, maybe three in some years, that we could add to it each year. And then have a plaque here at City Hall. I just think they need to be recognized. I don't feel we do enough, and I know I volunteer a lot, and there's a lot more people do way, way more than I could ever dream of.
I think, Commissioner Waddington, I think it might be appropriate if we can ask our, our future Commission Clerk McKenzie if she would perhaps put together some ideas on that and put that kind of a program together and perhaps bring that back to us.
Yeah.
And we can do that, perhaps we can talk about that and do that formally with a formal motion. I, as I mentioned earlier, this city runs on the backs of so many volunteers. We will, we will never run out of people to give awards to. I can assure you that. I, one of the, one of the, one of the best parts of this job I experienced last week, and that was to provide a proclamation to our, our friend and a, and a community-involved person, Mark Fogg. It was meaningful to me, and as I found out about a day later, it was even more meaningful to him that he received that, that proclamation and the key to the city from the city that, he adopted about 50 years ago. As I say, we will not run out of people to, to acknowledge, and I think it's up to us to attempt to acknowledge those people that, that really do make a difference in this community, and I certainly support the two that you've mentioned tonight. So perhaps our future Commission Clerk can put together something for us, and we can look at that in the next, in the next couple of weeks.
I have a note right now.
Great. Thank you. Under additional items of new business, I, I do have something. I'm going to reach out to Commissioner Meiser, who is the liaison to the Planning Commission. We are, we are in need of making an appointment to the Planning Commission due to the loss of Joe Galea, who is no longer going to be a resident in the city. I will turn to Mr. Meiser for his, for his recommendation. I know we had six or seven applications, and I believe that Staff and Mr. Meiser has a recommendation for this Commission to perhaps make a motion on. Commissioner Meiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd like to recommend Jade Castile. It's a, Jade is a young lady that's been showing up to a lot of Commission meetings and has shown a lot of interest in our local government, and I think she'd be a good addition for that. So that's my nomination.
I'll second that.
Is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Meiser?
Yeah.
That is, and Mr. Waddington, a second at discussion. I have the, the discussion, I will start because I have the benefit of having a resume in front of me, and I, I see that Ms. Castile is a graduate of the Ohio State University in Political Science, and has also worked in the legislator, legislature of Columbus. And more importantly, she has served on our Charter Review Committee. And as I've told a few other people on that committee, that can be a bad omen. I, I know that Commissioner Twine, and myself, and, and a few others, served on that committee and then got roped into running for elective office. So I will, and I will, I want to, and Mr. Meiser also, forewarned Ms. Castile is a forearmed, so to speak. So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
Oh. Would, would that be Ms. Cresser?
Ms. Twine.
Ms. Twine.
Yep.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Kelly, is that you?
Just for the, yeah, well, for the record, I just wanted to also make note in that motion that the term would be through December 31st of 2021.
Yep.
The remainder of Mr. Galea's term.
She, in other words, she fills, yeah, she fills that term. Excellent.
Correct.
Commissioner Twine.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, again, sing my praises of Ms. Castile. She has shown herself to be willing to serve on, on various boards at the city, to involve herself with learning more about how the political process works, as well as being, I think, what all of us are, a servant to the community of Sandusky. So I think she's a great choice. I believe she'll do a great job, and I'm looking forward to her, to hearing other great things come from Ms. Castile.
Excellent. Additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
That would be, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Hey.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, echo Commissioner Twine's comments, you know, and this, you know, Jade is a prime example of, I guess, of what, you know, I was sort of getting at in roundabout way of my comments earlier. You know, there's certainly an opportunity to be involved, especially, you know, for us young folks, so to speak. You know, but it all comes down to, you know, just, just taking the initiative and making the effort to do so. So I hope to continue to see individuals like yourself and others, you know, just really take the initiative to get involved and, and, you know, let their voices and their ideas and, and things of that nature be heard and ultimately hopefully implemented in some way or another. So kudos to her, and, yeah, and may it continue.
Excellent. Ms. Cresser, will you call the role on the motion, please?
Mr. Meiser?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Ms. Castile is now the new appointee to the Planning Commission. Thank you, Ms. Castile, for volunteering that service. Any other items of new business? Ms. Cresser, are there any communications from residents to be read on any item?
Chairman, Chairman, can I bring up new business? I'm sorry.
Mr. Meiser.
I'll make it very quick.
I thought you were sleeping.
Speak fast. I should just try to keep up. Anyway, Friday night, there was a torrential downpour, I think it was Friday. Stephanie and I went downtown in the golf cart, went down Shoreline Drive. It flooded like halfway up to my knees. And I can't, all the scrutiny that Shoreline Park had went under, I was, and the police and fire were on the scene doing their job, and Tom, Scott Cromer was called, Scott Cromer was called. He had his staff come down. They found a problem immediately. I thought it was an infrastructure problem, so I, that's why I was worried. So they found a test plug, what I believe it was, in, in the storm sewer going out to bay. They punctured it, relieved the water pressure. The coasting came on the seam immediately. They were there, and they offered like Shoreline Fisheries or Sandusky Fish House, like restitution for the damage. So everything went really great, and this is all within a half an hour. So I just wanted to thank Scott and everybody that was involved. I don't, I don't know all their names, but it went well.
Mr. Meiser, as the, as the liaison to the Engineering Department, I will accept your thanks for that, although I'm sure you realize, as do the rest of my commissioners, that I have absolutely nothing to do with what a successful operation that is. That would be Director Klein, who is, has done a magnificent job, and, and each of those people stand ready to pull us out of, literally pull us out of the fire at a moment's notice. And I think you experienced that on, on, on that issue on Shoreline Drive. I have as well in many instances. Thank you. Ms. Cresser, are there any communications from residents to be read?
No, Mr. Brady, there were no others.
I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
In a second.
You're adjourned.